Alrighty, good evening everyone. Welcome to the Douglas Planning Board meeting for October 9th, 2018. The meeting is being recorded and is available for viewing in the Douglas Public Access Channel and on the Douglas website. We'll come to order at 7 o'clock. First item on the agenda is discussion of zoning map amendments for Lakeside Residential. Okay, what's this all about?
Alright. Last Tuesday, I think it was last Tuesday, a request went to the Board of Selectmen pertaining to the Lakeside Residential zoning district. You may recall, we had some conversations with CMRPC maybe about a month ago in a very broad way. And so, the selectmen were requested by the applicant to consider a zoning bylaw amendment for Lakeside Residential for town meeting. And a copy of the request and the article is in your packet. I did also forward this out through email to everyone, so everyone can have a chance to look at it before the meeting and you're not, except for Mike probably, so you're not reading it at the meeting. Anyways, so, in a broad way, what the proposed zoning bylaw does is, it creates a district around a number of the larger water bodies in town. By water bodies, that means lakes and ponds. There is a map in your packet showing specifically which ones. You'll see a yellow highlight around those lakes and water bodies. So this would establish a new zoning district called Lakeside Residential. And so there would be an addition to the dimensional chart in the zoning bylaw. And the crux of the change, it's my understanding, the intent of the change is to provide some level of relief to non-conforming lots to our current zoning. And the logic is, these people want to put up a shed or do something relatively minor on a small lot, a pre-existing lot, they have to go to ZBA and get some kind of permission to do that sort of thing. So, the intent of the proposal, as I understand it, is to make those smaller lots conforming lots. And they would become conforming for a couple of aspects, okay? It would, number one, it would allow frontage off of the lake possibly, or the water body, and it'd have to be 50 feet of frontage. It would also have the opportunity to have frontage on a public street, obviously, but it'd be 50 feet. And it would also have the ability to gain, based on the proposal, gain frontage on an open and unoccupied private way shown on a plan leading to a public way. I did speak with the applicant and they're okay with dropping that last section. Well, let me back up. So, the selectmen got this proposal. They considered it. I hadn't had an opportunity to see it at that time at the meeting. I suggested that the selectmen solicit feedback from the planning board and we perhaps could improve the language. The selectmen, in a general way, seemed receptive to the concept. So, the goal of what I'm trying to do tonight is solicit input from the planning board and bring forth your recommendations or improvements to language to the Board of Selectmen. It's likely the Board of Selectmen would, if approved, it would be next Tuesday for the fall town meeting, then it would have to come back to the planning board for a public hearing process for those zoning changes. Then it would go to town meeting with our recommendation.
Yeah, me too.
I live on one of those.
Good, if we get a lunch.
Go ahead, Mike.
First one, I don't know if I'm comfortable with that eight-foot side setback.
Yeah.
The other thing I'm not comfortable with...
Comfortable with any of them.
Right. You know, I'm the same. But also, allowed by special permit for two families?
Yeah.
Two family and multifamily? That ain't gonna happen.
No way.
No way. Not happening.
Okay, where are you seeing that?
Last page. He's the last page and it is, it's in the...
Oh, that's the handout.
Last page, it's this here.
Those two...
Nope, keep going. It's right in the back.
Keep going, Mike. Listening to you, bud.
No.
Can I just highlight a few things?
Yeah.
So...
You have this.
Oh, wait, so Bill, be ready. So, Webster adopted this years ago, back in the 90s, and this opened up them for grants and to be able to run town, water town sewer around the lake. You know, their great ponds, their three great ponds, that's Webster Lake. They don't allow multifamily. So that, in that zoning district at all.
Well, that's saying not permitted.
No.
Oh, I see.
No, no. Yeah. Oh, Jesus, right. Yeah, no.
But that is not, that is not what is being put forward to town meeting.
Then why isn't it on here?
Well, let's get it right.
No, it's not.
It's not.
No, it's not. It's saying after the zoning change, it would be, a single family would be allowed by right, but everything else is special permit by the planning board.
This is Debbie Blaine. She's representing the petitioner.
So you have current and post, post-change conditions.
Right, but you have to understand, Mike. The front end, the thing that's with the letter, okay? The thing with the letter is really what we're talking about, okay? So you've got the cover letter to the selectmen.
And then the yellow...
You have the proposed drafted warrant article, okay?
Okay.
The language for the warrant article for town meeting.
And then the insert.
A little commentary on that.
And then look up through the review sheet of...
Hold on, hold on, let me finish. Let me finish. Then you have a series of pages that are primarily Appendix A and Appendix B, and there's a minor addition there and it's highlighted. And then, and then you have the zoning map.
Yeah, I saw that.
That's the last page of the proposal. Everything after that is what they were planning on presenting to town meeting. Now, that would just be discussion. That would not be what town meeting is voting on. I think they were just giving, this is the packet that went to the selectmen, so I think those pages after that map are strictly examples of other towns or that sort of thing. But that's not really what they're looking at, okay? That's their presentation to town meeting.
So we would get a final draft before we support anything? We want to scrutinize that.
They want to do it for next week.
You have to understand, the timing is...
So they'll try it all night.
The timing is such that the selectmen have to act on it at their next meeting, which is Tuesday, a week from tonight, okay? That means, assuming they come up with some form of this and approve it at that meeting, it would have to be in final form at that meeting. They would kick that final version back to the planning board to hold a public hearing for the zoning bylaw change.
We do this one for the spring.
And then we would go to town meeting and we would present a report on what we feel on the proposed zoning bylaw change.
I don't see how it's supposed to do all that.
Yeah.
So, can I ask a question?
Yeah, me too.
And I got a question too.
So, open or unoccupied private way, what does that mean? Just private way?
That is ambiguous. I spoke with town council about that and the reason that we were concerned about that language because it is undefined and it's open and ambiguous. Theoretically, you could have a private right-of-way that they could claim frontage off of in the district.
So if someone has a right-of-way that's been granted as an easement on their property, they could claim that as suggested as a frontage?
They could. Based on the way that's worded and it's ambiguous. So, but given that, you know, I went back and forth with the proponent and town council and they're okay, the proponent's okay and it suits their needs. Again, I think they put this together relatively quickly. And they were trying to get it in for town meeting. I think they're open to suggestions and their goal is to satisfy that first thing I said, that they, they're identifying with a number of properties that don't meet zoning, that many of them have existing dwellings on them, and they're trying to provide a way where they get relief.
Right, but they can get relief, currently they would get relief from the zoning board of appeals without these.
Well, I totally agree with cleaning up it up around the lakes. I mean, the town, all these camps were made way back when. I mean, and making these people jump through hoops, all these processes for a shed, I think is ridiculous. It can be streamlined, but to stuff it down and throw it like this with two meetings?
Yeah, it's not gonna work, yeah.
I don't like one bit. I mean, if this was going on for the last two months or so, you know, we have a public meeting, they have full board, the whole nine yards.
What's the mandate?
I have no problem.
That this has to happen now?
Right now.
The timeline, zoning timeline for town meeting. Okay, so if the target date is the fall town meeting, the selectmen will have, they have to close the warrant at the next meeting, so it has to be on the warrant. That's number one. Then procedurally, we have to advertise for two weeks before we have a hearing. And then we have our hearing and we'll have to have probably a special meeting in order to meet that. And then...
We would have a recommendation or...
And then we would have to present a report to town meeting.
For spring meeting, I see no problem.
I've never liked this 11th hour stuff.
Right.
We just, in general, we just contracted with CMRPC to look into these types of things and zoning changes that we want to make for our spring or annual town meeting, so...
This can go on with that.
Listen, I, general question?
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not gonna rush into this.
Okay, general question. The second page starts Appendix A and you've got all these...
Those are existing.
Finish, go ahead. It shows a new zone, LR, for Lake Residential.
Yeah.
And it's filled in. Yes, no, zoning board, planning board, blah, 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 blah. Where did all that come from?
Good, good question. That should be highlighted. That's a new column.
So that's part of the warrant?
That, that is part of the warrant, yes.
This is being recommended?
That is correct. That is part of the change.
Because somebody mentioned C, what is it, CMTR?
CMR.
That they were, one of the things they were gonna look into would be how to fill that column out.
Correct.
As I understood. Have you heard anything back on?
Well, we got a proposal from them and the way it was left with CMRPC for a similar scope project, not the same, similar, was they were, they were very excited about doing this project. The fee was pretty high. It was $15,000 to do it. It was a comprehensive look at what we were asking them to do, so we'd know what parcels were impacted and, you know, how things interplayed. Hold on, let me finish. And during the discussion, they came down and they actually said that even though we were all in sticker shock from the fee, they said they, they expected they could cover it with a grant, a district local technical assistance grant.
Yeah.
So it would cost the town nothing.
We told them at that meeting that there was no hurry. We wanted to get all this type of zoning organized and ready for the annual town meeting, not try to make anything by the fall town meeting.
I mean, I agree with cleaning this up.
Yes.
I'm not doing it tonight. I'm telling you that right now. It's too much, too quick. Not enough info yet, the whole nine yards.
So I have to carry a report back to the selectmen for their next meeting. So I'd like to be as specific as possible.
So you just want, you want to vote or you want just a recommendation?
I don't think you need a vote.
No.
But I think they're looking primarily for specific changes. They agree with the concept, okay? So if you have specific edits to what's proposed, that's what they're primarily interested in. Otherwise, if you're not, you know, I would say be as, as specific as possible as to what, what you think.
I'll be as specific as possible, that I am not in favor of this change until we have a chance to study it and maybe receive some info back from CMRPC.
I'd say do also a comparison of what Webster's is today. Did they adopt the Lake Residential zoning? And we could get almost a report from Webster of the benefits that they've seen from adoption of that.
Or the downfall, so.
Yeah, yeah. That would be good, that's good information.
But just some feedback from them, because they...
I will, I will recognize you in a minute.
They did receive...
Don't get your arm tired.
Yeah, they did receive grant, grant money to go with a warrant sewer around.
That ain't never gonna happen. So, that's out of the question. That's never gonna happen. I mean, water and sewer is not gonna go out around the rez and go out to home, like, I mean, if it does, I know I'll be long gone, but so...
That's not gonna happen.
No. So you can forget about that idea. That's trivial. I just don't like the 11th hour.
No, I'm not gonna be pushed into this. Yes, sir. Name and, name and address, please.
Eight Indian Hill Drive in Sutton. I also own property 115 Shore Road. The proposal, you know, basically 5,000 square feet, right now it's, it's in a bit of a conflict with being 100 feet away, your subject being 100 feet away from the well. You can't fit it on one lot. Two lots, yes. So basically, that would be 100 feet of frontage and, you know, 100 feet of depth. You could conceivably work that in there. That's my, my only comment.
Yeah. The selectmen did solicit feedback from the Board of Health.
Correct.
Separate from us.
That's in the back.
Yeah. Alright, so by...
Well, so...
Well, I mean, you want...
Somebody needs to look at the usage table here, right? Who's gonna do that?
Again, I was scrambling to look at this thing this afternoon.
And that's what I'm saying. It's, it's too much, too quick. It's like we want a responsible planning board right now. I'd say 11th hour, no, not doing it. I, I'm partly out, straight out against it. For spring meeting with everything else?
Annual town meeting, yeah.
Time and time much longer.
And I want, I want to hear back from CMRPC and if they got that grant, then we could move forward with nice presented documentation of what, what they have, if that works out.
Get information from the Board of Health, just like P suggested. Get full input from everybody.
Yeah, there was something in there about, would that be an approved septic design before anything else was done?
But you're trying to go back to the selectmen with more than just, we don't have time. You also want some guidance on the fact that there's inconsistencies in here, there's undue burden on adjacent properties with some of these setbacks need to be looked at. And I think is our duty as planning board is protect the rights of those adjacent properties and existing dwellings that are there, and there is mechanisms in place before zoning board anyway. So, all that being said, besides the 11th hour, it's not good. You know, it's not consistent. It's not...
It's not good planning.
It's not good planning at all right now. Never mind the 11th hour on top of that, so.
Not good planning.
Eight feet, oh my God, you know, things like that.
I'm trying to think of what's adopted.
And you can't be using frontage on a private, on a easement. You could have an easement on someone's property and use that as frontage.
I'm assuming that's what that means, but it's ambiguous, I'll be fair.
Yeah, and you don't want ambiguous. We cannot have ambiguous.
Yeah. Every lawyer in the, in the valley could be coming in saying, this is what I...
And using your 50-foot of frontage on the lake? You better have 50 on, on one side on the road, never mind that.
So, so what we spoke about was lots in existence having frontage on not less than 50 feet along the water's edge.
No, not good.
Or away, or away.
Or a public or private way. No, no, not, not the water's edge. I don't think that's something that's been thought out.
That's the whole point of this thing. I think that's what...
Well, how, you mean that there are properties that have 21 feet of frontage? Is that what they're suggesting?
Possibly.
I'm okay with, I'm okay with 50 feet on a private way or a public road, which is, you can spit that. But 50 feet also on the water? What is that, what, that's not frontage?
And/or, there's...
No, no. It's accessible.
But and/or means, water's okay. And I'm suggesting it's not.
It says you have to have 50 feet on the water.
It's, it's or...
You're right. The way it's presented, Mike, and it's grammatically, because I didn't catch that either. I was thinking it has to have the 50 feet of water and then these other things also. But that's not the way it's worded. The way the word "or" is used, it, it becomes a chain. You could have either this or that and that therefore applies to any three of those things.
Right. You see, it's, it has to be thought out.
It has to have 50 feet somewhere.
But, but I'm suggesting that I don't believe the 50 feet on the water is a, a test. It should not be at all. It should be 50 feet of frontage, period, on a roadway.
I mean, I know, I know, we're looking for specific things, but I guess the boiling it all down, okay?
There's too many inconsistencies.
Let's just take, take a look at, at the approach and the concept and what, what's trying to be achieved. They're looking to make it easier for people primarily that have existing dwellings on small lots.
Which I understand.
And I'm not, I'm not opposed to that.
So, so, the question is, does this do that? Do you agree with the concept of doing that? Does this do that, in your opinion?
Don't know. Don't have enough info yet. So I'm not gonna make a decision.
We don't have enough, we would be derelict in our duty as planning board members to rush into something of this magnitude. And the selectmen requesting us to act on it tonight and recommend to them by next Tuesday is, is, is not the way to, it's not good planning, it's not the way we should run out of...
And is it not our charge to not only look forward, looking to those who would propose to build and do changes to their property in order to enjoy it, but also to protect those that are already there, just as much? The rights of people there. To put somebody particularly eight feet away has to be studied. It's difficult.
Well, right, I mean, the concept, it needs to get cleaned up. And I totally agree, these lots, like in back in the day, and the people should have the same rights as you and I, without having to go through a...
I'm on one of those lots.
No problem whatsoever.
He's on one of those lots.
But the idea is, it needs to be looked at thoroughly. It needs, I want input from people that have maybe some of these lots, information from Webster. More information at CMRPC, get a good consensus, then we'll say, okay, it might be 15 feet on the side, not eight feet, and the 50 feet of frontage, yeah, water's fine, because some lots are ice-shaped. I have no problem with that. But I'm not doing it tonight with it being stuck on our...
But also, somebody would suggest that a person who buys next to one, or one of these lots, has bought there and knew what the zoning was at the time.
Zoning, no. Because it's mute right now.
Is it?
Yeah, because it's IRA. So every house is illegal.
No, I understand that, but if you go in, when you buy...
Non-conforming.
Right, they're all non-conforming, a lot of them, right? But, but what I'm suggesting is people buy there understanding that this is what they have and they don't want houses closer than what was the zoning and have the zoning board look at this and not have it by right, that's all.
Not, not everybody's that well-educated to know, again, when real estate gets passed, whether they bought a non-conforming lot or conforming lot.
Right.
Because it's not a requirement by the state that you have to disclose whether you're conforming or not conforming.
I, I would disagree that...
Show me it in the form.
That in today's, no, it's not in the form, but in today's real estate market, especially people who bought back when, and when there was zoning in place at the time, you're saying that people had no access to the zoning bylaws whenever they were enacted at the time they bought the property. And because of that, ignorance is, is something we should reward for not taking a look?
No, you know, you...
I'm trying to understand that.
No, no. Let's not twist it, let's back up a little bit, okay?
I'm not twisting it, I'm just presenting it.
When, when something's transferred, so if I sell something to Mike...
You're conveying to Mike, right?
Conveying to Mike.
Not all information.
I don't have to convey whether it's conforming or not conforming to him.
You don't.
It's up to him to do his homework on that piece. That's, that's my point.
So if you did, and people who don't do their homework...
Which is 99.9% of the people.
I disagree that that's the case.
It is a lot, there's a lot.
I'm dropping the subject.
We can do this for the next two hours.
Yeah, yeah, that's true.
And, and that's what we need, is, is those two hours to do it. And we need more than two hours to do it.
Right, there's one discussion involved here. Let's move on.
I'm going to propose that we say no, inform the selectmen that we do not have enough time to investigate this, look at it, and make a recommendation. And that we do, we have plans and we've already made plans to bring it up at the annual town meeting and I think it should wait until then. Is anybody in favor of that recommendation?
Yeah, we've got a light agenda.
Let's move on from that.
We've got time to take it off.
The spring, the spring meeting?
I would check with, uh...
Yeah. Yeah?
Phil, I would check with Webster on the, the frontage on the waterway. They might have dealt, dealt with something small.
My concern is unintended consequences, you know? The stuff we're not thinking about.
I want town, I want town council's opinion on anything else that we bring up and change during that time too. We don't have a time, if we, if we try to do it tonight, there's just not enough time. 11th hour and I'm not gonna be, I don't like 11,000.
And there's gotta be more than one other town that's done this in the state of Massachusetts.
Yeah, Webster has it.
Webster, I just can't think of someone else.
How many, how many different?
Monterey. Monterey's done it, Webster's done it.
So let's, let's get information from these towns.
They have to have frontage on the water to be called Lakeside Residential. Can't be across the street.
We agree with that, yeah. Yeah, that makes sense, yeah.
That's not true. That's not true. So, 'cause I know, okay, 'cause I, I was served in planning board in Webster for quite a few years. They literally zoned an area, a whole area of Lake Residential lots.
But that's not what we're looking at here.
But not, no, you're proposing, what's being proposed here is...
The map that was presented...
Is a budding water.
Is a budding water.
Right, and that's, that's the genesis of what this really is, and we don't have to do exactly what Webster does.
No, no. But I would like to find out feedback, a possible from those towns, of the pros and cons of them doing this.
Since the enactment.
Since they've, since they've done it for more than a year or two, it's been in place for a bit, is there, are they saying we shouldn't have done this part of it? It's biting us, you know what I mean? And it's so...
And I'm sure that would be part of CMRPC's scope.
I would hope, exactly. And that's, and that's feedback we need to make. Yes, we're gonna make our own decision, but it's also good to know what really works. And maybe what is bad.
And frankly, again, my personal opinion wouldn't be limited on those lakefront properties. I mean, you got, look at Wallon Lake Terrace.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, you've got a much larger area that, that...
Or a cabin.
Why should those people be penalized just because they don't have water for a property?
Even around the rez, there's, there's a few around the rez even that would fall into that, some of those little side cabin roads. They're not on the water, but they're right across the street from it, but yet they're all the non-conforming lots from back in the 50s and 60s.
There's too many things that have to be worked out and not enough time to do it.
Right.
And we, we have been working on it.
Alright, let's move on.
We'll continue to work on it and hopefully have some...
So I will drop something and have Ernie review it, if that's okay with everyone?
Yeah.
Alright. Couple emails to those guys.
As a response to the selectmen. Yes.
Okay, very good. Okay, very good.
So, yeah, public hearings and stuff like that.
Thank you.
Do all that, yeah.
Thanks, Deb. I appreciate it, thanks, Deb. It'll get there, but.
We'll keep working on it, Deb, just too, just too, too short of time.
Yeah, too short.
All right, number two. Notice of intent to sell, MGL C point six one S eight, sale of property of Susan M. Lucier, Maple Street.
Some of you may be very familiar with this property.
Very, yeah. Oh, is this the one, yeah, this is the one I know, yep.
He's a character.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's the, that's the backlot, yeah, right? They had to get the frontage way back when?
Yes.
Okay.
They're claiming public way a while ago.
Oh, they got access now, right? I thought they did a land spot.
I'm not familiar with this.
They did a land spot.
Yeah.
So.
Cool.
Well, I think this is just coming out of sixty-one. She may be looking to build something, I don't know if she's gonna claim lot frontage exception lot, or whomever is gonna claim it.
Maybe to reduce, reduce.
Yeah, something like that, yeah.
Right, because it's five acres, it's over the three acre threshold.
And there's always been a question over this little piece here, I mean, not that this applies, this is really a very straightforward request.
Yeah.
It's sixty-one A, and do we want to exercise our right of first refusal?
Right. How did she get sixty-one A with under?
Can't afford any.
Under eight acres or something, under a certain, what's the acres count?
Five.
Was it five? Oh, so she's right at the limit, okay.
I'm not in charge of that.
Okay.
It's five acres.
Yeah, you know.
I know. Forestry starts at ten.
Do we, uh, we don't, we don't wanna exercise our right of.
No, we're good. Nope, you need a formal vote? Bill?
Uh, yeah.
Why does she say over four acres and it's five acres?
I don't know.
It's interesting in that letter.
See this piece over here, what's it say?
Co-tenant. Co-tenant. Existing parcel, forty feet, but there's forty feet here. Not a building lot, that little piece, obviously. What does that mean? Owns it with someone else?
I don't know. Do you wanna, you need a motion?
So we're just, we're saying we just don't wanna buy it.
Correct, very simple.
Yeah, we don't, we don't wanna buy it.
Yeah. How about it?
Okay, you wanna make a motion?
Move that the town not exercise its right of first refusal.
You got it.
That's it?
That's it. What's it made by, Mike?
Seconded by Kenny.
Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. Item three.
I wanted to let the board know that we did get requests for the following roads to be accepted as public ways, Cobblestone Lane, Meeting House Lane, Wildflower Drive, and Woodland Road. So we are going to be working towards finalizing those over the next number of months, and in the spring, when the annual town meeting award starts closing, we'll have a layout hearing with the selectmen, I'm sure, and, you know, we'll take it from there.
Is the list of roads getting smaller?
Yep.
Is it?
Yeah.
I know we're inactive on it.
Years ago, you, you had a list a mile long, and trying to nail it.
Actually, some of these, I've been chasing these people to.
Chap to ninety money.
Get them on the town meeting.
We're chapter ninety.
Awesome. There's nothing in our packet about that issue, right?
No.
We're good.
No. It's just information.
Is that looped, I think already established?
Thanks, so everybody's on board with that? Okay. Number four, request for release of earth removal bond, Pine Bedoy on One Lucky Damn Road.
What's A D?
This was a permit for phase two after phase one.
Correct.
I simply have to check the dollars that are associated with it, but I wouldn't be opposed with the planning board voting to sign it, signing it, and instructing me to withhold it after I confirm, until I confirm those numbers.
I'm okay with that. Any questions on it?
No.
Nope. You wanna make that motion?
Make a motion to release the bond for earth removal on One Lucky Damn Road. Wanna use the E R number? Do we need to use that?
Um, sure.
E R dash eighteen zero six one nine, for the amount to be determined.
Verified.
Verified.
By Bill. Okay, wanna make second on that motion? Motion made by Mike Z, seconded by Mike G. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion passes. Sleaky Hollow subdivision, request to sign covenant, twenty-four lots.
It is, um.
Just a time for Halloween.
Yeah, it's a backlot.
Just a time for Halloween.
Sleepy Hollow. Town council approves it to form. The only thing, there's a couple of spots that are blank spaces that they're gonna fill in when they record it, so it should be good to go.
Are we gonna sign this tonight?
Yeah, it's in here.
Yeah.
Wanna make a motion?
Do we need to make a motion? No.
No.
Just sign it.
Just sign it.
Signing is the.
We're just signing, we've already approved it.
We did already approve it?
Yeah, we just need to sign it.
Covenant, right?
Just vote it.
Yeah.
I'm moved. Somebody moves to sign the covenants submitted for Sleepy Hollow?
Twenty, the twenty-four lots of Sleepy Hollow?
Yeah.
So moved.
Seconded by Mike Z, seconded by Mike G. Any further discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, abstain, motion carries. New England Realty Ventures LLC, site plan review permit, seventy-four Main Street.
Hot off the presses.
Hot off the presses, yeah. That's where they go.
Uh, I got a problem with my header, so I'm gonna have to probably have you guys come in at some point and sign it, but this is the draft decision. I assume your one in the file kinda looks funky like this with no header.
Yeah.
If it does, then we're gonna have. If it has a header, then we're all set, but I doubt it will. Is it not in there?
What does it say?
No, it wasn't in though.
Exxon Dunk?
No, I don't, I don't have this.
Oh, no, it's Exxon Dunk.
Okay.
Says here, exxondunk.com.
That says email. Okay, so, um.
Yeah, but he uses AOL. Who uses AOL, Phil?
Right.
Is that the tracing?
What was the sound it made when you?
You got mail.
You got mail. All right, so most of it's meat and potatoes, standard stuff, incidentals, title of the plans. And the gist of the most important part, they had no waiver request, is section seven, and I don't even have page numbers on these things, so, um, I'll have to make it look a little prettier for you guys to come in and sign it.
You put something in about those trees?
Yes, yes, okay, so special conditions.
Decisions, conditions, special conditions, or?
Starting at thirty-one, number thirty-one. Applicant shall install catch basin at the Rydell Road intersection to the satisfaction of the town engineer. Relo, thirty-two, relocate proposed trees located nearest to the proposed site egress location along Main Street to improve site distance. Thirty-three, add underground electric warning tape to detail C six four, detail two. Thirty-four, earth removal permit may be required. Thirty-five, a five-foot wide port concrete sidewalk along the lot frontage on Main Street that's in accordance with mass DOT standard specs. Thirty-six, lower the rim elevation of the Eastermost outlet for the stormwater management system. Thirty-seven, entire site grass and landscape area shall be maintained by property owner to the edge of the paved right away. Thirty-eight, any construction work performed within the town right away shall require a separate permit from the road commissioners pursuant to blah, blah, blah. Thirty-nine, applicant shall file permit with the conservation commission as may be required.
Where is it for the trees by the power lines?
Question. Question.
Go ahead, Mike.
They have agreed to move the power on both.
Yes, that's on the plan, it's shown on the plan.
On the plan, not in the document.
No, the document references the date and the plans that we were working off of.
There is a light at that intersection.
I know, we got relocate.
There is, there is a light. I looked at it this weekend.
Okay.
A question I brought up.
I don't know whether it's on.
We have the trees going along sixteen there.
Yeah, yeah.
Does the power run along that side of the street?
What was the question?
The side of the power.
It's on the Dunkin' Donuts side. The new Dunkin', the proposed Dunkin' Donuts side.
So, they have trees there underneath the power lines, what good does that do? We keep cutting trees down at our.
Well, they're moving them back, right?
They can't, because the septic is right behind it.
Well, then eliminate them.
Well, that's what I brought up the other week, and I got fought at. I, I don't want trees planted underneath the state of Hollywood.
They would remove whatever we want.
Depends what they plant for trees and how high they're gonna grow, I mean.
Well, why don't we just, we could do a, sorry.
I would think landscaping.
Like bushes.
They're asked to maintain it out to the right way.
Whatever you guys wanna put in.
Ernie, what do you think, we just have them, before they plant any trees, they could come out, they could stake them, we could do a sidewalk, and then we visually know where they're gonna go, have an idea.
Well, we all know where they're gonna go, trees grow up and they get big. If the power lines within twenty feet or ten feet, the trees are gonna be in the power.
I don't disagree with you.
I mean, it's not rocket science on that part, and that's the part I don't wanna have. We're constantly battling, we don't have money to cut the trees down and stop losing power, and here we are having somebody plant trees running beneath the power lines. I mean, it's defeating the purpose of what we're trying to accomplish.
What did we say about this last time? Because I know it came up.
Just the two, just the two by the driveway. Unless they were still gonna.
They weren't eliminated.
Power line issue, it was a. Well, I didn't think, I didn't, nobody mentioned the power lines.
No.
Or thought of it. Now, on the way home, I'm thinking, man, the power lines are on that side of the street, and here we are telling them to plant the trees.
We didn't eliminate those trees.
We just.
Two by the road. Because they moved those back, because they can, but they're leach field, here's the road, sidewalk, and here's their leach fields, and they're gonna put the trees there.
I didn't make it up. As a matter of fact, I cut and pasted.
Is that a crazy problem?
I'm just bringing it up.
That's up to you.
I'm just trying.
Change it, just say, tell me what you want.
And just trying to stop problems before they exist.
Can we, can we go to bushes and stuff?
Yeah. Bushes slash trees?
Yeah, I'm just.
Exactly.
I'm just bringing it up.
No, it's a good point.
Oh, whatever you, if you. I don't have a problem with eliminating the two trees out front, if that's, if that's a.
Well, it's more than two.
More than that now.
Was the ones on sixteen?
There's a row of trees.
Well, can we just put something in that, that, trees to be planted shall not interfere with power lines, overhead power lines? Put that in there.
Okay.
That'll leave it up to them to determine where they're gonna place.
But also shall not, or predicted to, you know, estimated to, because they'll put them in and say, doesn't interfere, but then ten years from now, it's.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. I mean, that's what I wanna stop.
Yeah, word, something that says that they shall not plant.
Trees that are estimated to.
Or can grow into the power.
Right, right.
Apple trees.
No trees taller than ten feet or something.
It's apple trees.
Trees shall not be planted that will conflict.
They're gonna be minimal.
With growing red apples.
Because, I mean, it's a constant battle. I mean, and we all know what it is in the town with power outages, and the trees, they die, they rot, they fall. And I can't see, it's silly, us having people then planting trees when the next generation are gonna have to cut them down.
They could put a shrub row or something, I mean, something.
You don't want shrubs, because you don't want sightline, it means the tree was. You don't want, you don't want the sightline to contribute.
Okay. Trees and shrubs shall not be planted, shall be, shall not be planted that so as to.
Arrested to.
So as to.
Projected to.
And they're gonna come back and say, okay. What does that?
To interfere. To conflict with the power lines or sightlines.
And create a maintenance issue for the town. You know, you don't want that, period, at all.
Bushes, they're not trees.
Just try.
Comes up from it, easy.
Two things I also wanted to point out and get your feedbacks on, because this is our first one like this.
Yep.
Number twenty-five, hours of operation.
Where are you?
Do you wanna put anything there? Do you wanna?
Hours of operation.
Just not address it? Do you want, I just stole this from one of our past ones, and actually.
A lot of them are, twenty-four seven.
Yeah.
You're in an area.
One down there on Lucky Damn Road's twenty-four hours, right?
Yeah.
Well, what is, what is the one across the street?
No, that only goes till ten o'clock.
But there's no, I can't remember if there's a permit with conditions on that, those hours. If there was, I guarantee we put it to the owner and said, you know, what would you like your hours of operation to be?
So we, do we know what his allowed hours of operation are?
I don't.
Across the street? Because then if we allow them the twenty-four hours, and he comes back with twenty-four hours, we have to give it to him.
Well, I don't think anybody would have a problem with that.
And he owns.
For, for they stay open twenty-four hours.
I have no problem with twenty-four, where it's located at, twenty-four seven.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
You guys good with the wet quarter?
Yeah, especially considering, uh, snow.
And then the next, the next one, do we wanna limit delivery and shipment hours?
Because they do that, sometimes they'll try to do that odd, odd hours to eliminate the traffic.
Okay.
I mean.
Strike twenty-six.
Yep. Um, well, we still have, no delivery shipments are permitted on Sunday.
That's fine.
We wanna keep that in there, right?
Yeah.
But some of them do deliver on Sundays, I mean, your, your milk.
Well, that's what I meant, because it's in here.
Right.
Delivery shipments are permitted only between the hours of seven to five, okay? We don't, we don't care Monday through Saturday. No delivery shipments are permitted on Sunday.
Eliminate twenty-six. I mean, the removal of backup alarms, that's DOT, so you're not removing backup alarms.
Yeah, but don't.
If it was a warehouse situation right next to a residential, even that can be a battle, because now you're playing against DOT. So.
I mean, do you eliminate twenty-six, or are you just amend it, so it would be helpful to them?
What's there to amend?
Well, so you don't, you don't leave it as ambiguous, you have something that suggests whether we believe it's twenty-four hour delivery or not, what do we believe in? What do we stand on that? Are we just gonna leave it?
For where it's located at?
Yeah, I don't really care, but unless there's, there's houses across the street, though.
Those, no.
At all? They're all set back, way back.
Way back. It's a solar farm. It's a solar farm and a brook.
Yeah, you're right, by the farm, and, yeah, why not?
I mean.
Time-wise, delivery anytime is.
Yeah, I mean, we can amend that for.
How about day of the week? Do we care about Sunday?
Some deliveries come in on Sundays.
I know.
That's when they're, Sunday morning, if they're not begging them, that's when their donors[1422.84] donors come in.
Yeah, they don't have to come on Sundays, they can arrange their schedules all right.
Don't they get donut deliveries daily?
Yeah.
What'd he say?
Nothing in 26 that we really need to do.
I mean, I don't, it's up to the board, but...
We do have 26.
Sundays don't have to be delivery dates.
Right.
Yeah.
Give them 24 hour, six days a week.
Six days a week, yeah, they can only handle that.
And then eliminate Sunday, I mean, there used to be blue laws in this country, you know? I'm not saying, I'm just saying.
It's not downtown Boston, it's a little Dunkin' Donuts on Main Street and Douglas. I think they can get their deliveries within six days, Sundays...
We're giving them 24 hours a day.
Right.
So much for fresh donuts.
No Sunday?
It's up to the board, I'm, I'm saying, I'm not in favor of Sundays, but you guys make a decision.
I don't mind the Sundays, it's not every place in the state. It's...
Okay, Mike doesn't mind?
Today's world is a 24/7 world.
I'm good with taking out 26.
I think they probably tried to...
I would say let's not take it out entirely, but I would say there are no limitations on it.
Yeah, fine.
Only because for the next decision, I don't wanna overlook it.
If you know where it says in 25, maybe conduct it 24 hours a day, then put it there. Delivery shipments are permitted 24 hours a day, six days a week, or whatever you want. Put it in.
Yeah, commercial zone.
Yeah, so it's said, we've been clear, you said, say what we mean, so...
Monday through Saturday, yeah. Okay, go ahead, Bill.
You want me to...
24 hours a day?
It's unlimited, right? That's what you want?
Well...
There are no limitations on deliveries?
Well, he's saying Monday, yeah, he's saying Sunday is limited.
Who is?
Ernie.
I did.
And I think I would agree with that.
I'm just saying, if I'm, if I'm outvoted, that's fine.
So, okay.
And so, I think...
Mike, unless, say it's okay for Sunday?
Okay for Sunday.
I say no, Aaron says no, Kenny?
I think it's okay, actually, because I, I don't think that, uh, I, I think they're gonna try avoid deliveries on Sunday anyway.
I'm okay with it.
Didn't leave it the way it is.
So they care, then put it in. 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Except on holy Christmas.
I'm just gonna say there are no limitations on that.
We can get fresh coffee on Sunday.
All right. I used to like the blue light, but, you know, I mean...
Me too.
I think it'll pass.
Back to the family, families just...
Yeah, what plans we did earlier? All right, what's the next one, Bill?
That's it.
That's it.
That's it.
We already voted on this, right?
Yeah. You voted it, I, I was hoping this was gonna be a final for you to sign tonight, but I got...
I, I have a question, just tell me, it says...
So I'll probably call everyone to come in and sign it.
Yeah.
When it's done.
I have a question on their narrative of what the project is. I think it's just something that they didn't care to put down, not that on purposes, because always used to have the commercial buildings convenience store with the drive-through for coffee sales for a portion of the space. Doesn't say anything about food. It's a food establishment, should it not say food establishment? They're gonna, it's a restaurant.
It's not, it's not a restaurant.
Well, it, why is it not a restaurant?
Are you sitting down there and eating?
Yeah. They're gonna have like 40 seats or something. You know, like men, like men.
All right. I took it as the one up on, on 146, there, right off there.
No, 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 no.
I mean, there's not a sit-down there.
But if there was no sit-down, they're still serving sandwiches and food.
Serving food, food service.
Right, so should it not say coffee sales and food?
Food service, yeah.
And food service? I mean, to me, somebody could say, hey, hey, you're looking at a coffee sales, there's no food here.
That is true, but I do wanna point out for your convenience that it is in a quote, this is taken out of their application.
So it's, so if somebody challenges them, that's their fault for not quoting it correctly?
I'm just letting you know, I'll have to probably revise the upper language if we change that. Or take it out altogether.
Well, if it's, if it's gonna be food, what the hell's gonna get involved too, then, right?
Correct.
Well, they're gonna be involved anyway.
That's, that's, well, that's, yeah, that's their end of it.
But I think you got a good point, someone appeals the decision.
Yeah, and they can do, and, and shame on them.
I do specifications, that's what I feel.
I agree, I agree.
It'd be, say what you mean, you know?
Yeah.
That's why I learned to vote, to propose, yes.
And it's truly a restaurant, that's what it is, for coffee and food sales, or restaurant sales. Prepared foods, which is different than just...
I wouldn't call it a restaurant, but food sales, yeah, you're right, they got egg muffins and...
But it's prepared food, which is different.
But I mean, if you go along those lines...
Prepared foods.
Yeah, it is, they make those sandwiches when you order them, yeah.
Right, 'cause you could go in a convenience store and buy the sandwiches that are prepared, I mean, that are already there, but it's not...
Prepared on site.
It's not prepared on site.
Correct.
You go in there and order a ham, egg, and cheese on a bagel, that's...
So how about this? Drive-through for coffee, open parentheses, food, close parentheses, sales.
I mean, I just wanna, yeah, okay.
You can make sure that it's covered.
Okay.
Number seven?
Okay, so you'll draft it up, Bill, and then...
I'll wrap that up and have Maria get in touch with you.
Very good.
Whether it's email or phone.
The narrative, they should...
You could use two more sentences.
All right.
Okay, what do we got next?
Number seven?
Seven, Maple Heights, Isabel Circle.
That's just for information, uh, we did send out a certified letter, um, and we had the abutter that was inquiring again.
They've been in here a few times.
Yes.
They have, I remember that.
Yes, so, so I did follow up with a certified letter to Stacy and his attorney, and, um...
Anything?
Well, not, not yet. I mean, we've called, have not gotten returned calls.
So you certified?
But I certified letter, so...
Very good.
That's really all we can do, we have no recourse.
We have no recourse, yeah.
It's a private...
Is, um, is there still one lot?
2018, Town of Boroughville Comprehensive Plan.
What's going on with Boroughville? We're all moving to Boroughville?
No, Boroughville sent us a courtesy copy of the comprehensive plan, I think Maria forwarded you through email a copy of that, and there might be a copy in there.
No, there was nothing in my folder, I haven't seen it.
No, no, it's on the phone.
I apologize.
Yeah, that's okay, we'll get a look at it.
And, uh, anyways, they, they wanna know if we have any input or feedback to their comprehensive plan.
What is the comprehensive plan?
I expect they'll hope you read it, and then...
Give me a copy then, a hard copy, 'cause I, I won't fight it on...
You'll have to sign it.
Well, it might be for a power station.
It's in demand.
Oh, print me out one, I don't see it.
It's in demand.
I'm still fighting that power station thing, power plant battle?
I think so.
All right, future agenda items.
I don't think we're ready for much.
Subdivision regulations to be announced, to be announced, um, retail marijuana regulations, solar regulations, drone regulations. Upcoming meetings, 10/23 is our next meeting.
Uh, possibly sooner.
Oh, yeah, because they are.
Can I make a request? It's a personal request about meeting time, since you've...
Wait, oh, sorry, go ahead.
I can't imagine the selectmen pushing it forward when they, when they know that we have to do all the work, and we're saying that we haven't got the time to do the work, so I can't imagine them pushing it forward.
It's not for me to say.
It's, it's not for, no, but I did just...
We, we are a board like they are a board, and that's what we're supposed to be in kind of in charge of.
Right.
And that's what we're saying, whether they like it or not, it is what it is.
And we vote about it.
Every now and then, we're gonna stand up for what this board is, not so much what they care about.
We are not appointed, we are elected.
Right, so, we're saying, no, not...
They can't tell us we have to do it.
Mike, what's up?
But just, we'll get to it, just give us more time, and it's, it's been on our agenda already, so...
The marijuana regs for retail, we don't have to really do anything if that's gonna fall on the...
My only concern in, about that, and I gotta talk to Matt about this, is, um, if, if for some reason, uh, they fail that fails...
What do you mean, what fails?
Their proposed zoning, uh, general bylaw article for licensing retail.
Oh, I didn't even know they submitted something.
The line that failed.
If it fails, um, do we have a plan B, and do we need a plan B?
Yeah, I got that.
Yeah, we need to create a zone.
Well, and I wasn't sure what Oxford implemented, you might wanna check with them, but that's the reason why I brought this up, is because I know Oxford was like, already stepping forward, if they're like, here's our retail spot.
Yeah, we need, we need to create a zone.
It seems like we're always behind the eight ball in all these other communities, I mean, I brought this up, how many months ago? I brought it, end of the spring, and here we are, still, nothing going on, and everybody wants to play piddlywinks.
Could we not, okay?
So, I don't know.
We have other groups coming to us wanting something for Fall Town Meeting, can we do something quickly for that, or is it wait till spring?
What's that?
It depends on...
For a bylaw, a zoning by, uh, the zoning...
Tuesday, the warrant closes, Tuesday.
Yeah, yeah.
General bylaw on...
On creating a zone, not a bylaw, but creating, I was creating a zone for retail outlet.
Okay, I mean, when I listened to the selectmen's being, seemed like they were, they were going with the ball, it was in their court, and they were taking charge of it, so, I mean...
But do they not consult us on...
On a zoning bylaw, they would, on a general bylaw, they, they, they wouldn't have.
They don't have to technically.
They don't have to consult.
I'm talking about a zoning bylaw that we should have.
The zoning bylaw, they can just create their own thing and send it to us, and we have to have a public hearing.
Yep.
That's what I think.
But there's not enough time anyway, 'cause we haven't got anything from them.
Tuesday, if they, if they decide on Tuesday they wanna move forward with what's been presented...
Then we have two weeks to have a public hearing.
And, we need a quorum.